It started before. You ready? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. We call to order this meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission on August the 25th at 7:00 PM. He had noted for the record Ms. Manos, alternate member of the commission, is sitting in place of Commissioner Vacola, regular member. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on August 12th and August 19th. And let's see here. I'll read off. Are we taking up position one? Okay. Okay, petition number one is text amendment, petition of the Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to amend section 3 dot 30 of the zoning regulations to extend a moratorium on methadone clinics. Mr. Urbanski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in, let's see, 2000 June, on June 6th, 2019, the zoning commission adopted a moratorium on methadone clinics for a period of 24 months. And, you know, given the past two years, you know, towards the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, that kind of limited our ability to kind of collaborate with other commissions and do other work that I know the commission was interested in doing regarding, you know, whether or not it was in the town's best interest to explore other options for the allowing of methadone clinics in town. You know, none of that really happened over the past two years. So I took it upon myself while, before I left for vacation, to start putting together this extension of the methadone clinic moratorium. Typically, I like to run this by the commission at a meeting for discussion. However, given the timing and the fact that, you know, we, I assume the commission would not want to be surprised with a methadone clinic application, I took it upon myself to put together the moratorium extension. It would be, I'm just kind of following off of what was done in years past, so I proposed a 24-month moratorium. And this would be expiring on September 15th, 2023. This application was referred to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. We received feedback from Ms. Sadoriak. Her review concluded that they had no comments at this time, that there was no conflicts with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act. That's a requirement of our referral. This was also referred to the Metropolitan Council of Governments. We received no, no comments back from Metropolitan Council of Governments. So the one other item that requires review for this application is the Planning Commission. This was referred to the Planning Commission, but not in time. They had already set their agenda, and they felt that this item would have been rushed if we had squeezed it on the agenda, which I understand. So they had asked that we open this item, but hold it open until they're able to have their meeting next month and provide us with comments regarding a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, which I support that request. And yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Okay, questions from members? Ms. Tanner?
Could we vote on it this evening and wait for their response? Or should we wait and?
No, it would be my recommendation that we do not vote, that we hold our discussion, offer any, offer the public if they would like to have any, give any public commentary, and then leave it open so that the record remains open and we can receive their recommendations formally into the, into the file.
So we're the last step?
Final step.
Always the last step in the process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess we should move to continue? Or should I ask for any? Well, is there, there's nobody in the chamber, but if there's anybody here that would like to make any comments in favor or in opposition? Hearing none. We'll take a motion to continue until our next.
September 22nd.
September 22nd? Continue. Motion to continue, Mr. Hendrick, second, Mr. Vigliati. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Okay, item number two, text amendment petition of Merit Eight Owners LLC seeking to amend section 5.3 and 6.3 of the zoning regulations regarding residence apartments in an OPD zone. Mr. Urbanski?
So the applicant had reached out, and for the same reason of the referral to the Planning Commission, they were unable to also get on that agenda. Therefore, they requested that this item be deferred until the, our next regular meeting on September 22nd. So they will not be presenting tonight.
We'll take another motion to continue. Mr. Francis?
Defer.
Let's say a sec, defer, continue. Oh.
Continue would be for an item that has been opened.
Has opened, okay. So this one's to motion to defer by Mr. Francis, second by Ms. Manos. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. That concludes the public hearing at 7:06, probably a world record. Motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Vigliati, second. Mr. Francis, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We'll go into our administrative session. We have a couple petitions on the table, so let's go through them one by one. Let's begin. Ms. Hendrick, you want to take the first one off the table?
Motion, and it's 4060 Beach Street, what you're referring to?
Okay, motion by Mr. Hendrick to take 4060 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Parkway Plaidup Partners off the table. Is there a second? Mr. Vigliati, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make my motion, and I'm gonna include in it some, some things that I should be included in it if we decided to approve it. This way, we're not making all kinds of amendments, but these are just my thoughts. We can discuss them, we can, we can change it, but I'll just, I'll just include these in, in it from the start, so.
Proceed, sir.
And, and again, it'll be a motion in the affirmative, so I make a motion to approve. That approval would include a three-foot-high split-rail fence around the street-side perimeter of the property, a two-foot-high shrub in front of that split-rail fence, only one opening into, into the seating area. There should be no stand-up service, seating limited to 96. Any outdoor music hours would, would be, would need to cease by 6:00 PM on Sunday, Monday through Thursday at 8:00 PM, Friday through Saturday at 10:00 PM. No amplified music, and all entertainment must adhere to the town's sound ordinance. I would request that we incorporate into it a six-month approval, and that, and after that, three one-year approvals, that the applicant would need to come back and demonstrate to the administration that there have been no adverse violations of the rules before the, before the next year's approval went forward. And I'll start with that, but.
Okay.
You can second it.
You can second it, you can say something. You want to make that second, sir?
Oh, before, before we do that, too?
Yeah.
And then, and then one other piece would be that some sort of structure, he had talked about a band shell, not to exceed 12 feet in height, that whether it's made of cloth or a hard material that would direct the sound out towards, out towards Long Island Sound, but not to exceed 12 feet high, and how he decides to design it would, would be up to his, up to his decision, up to his choice, but it would, not to be, because if he goes above 12 feet high, I think it would block the views of the house behind him, but it would give some protection to the house, whether he has a roof over it, and again, if it's cloth or if it's some type of harder material, but not to exceed 12 feet in height. That would be my final piece at this point.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
So the reference of Mr. Hendrick's proposal. Now, you said that the first permit was for six months?
So let's get a second first, and then we can, right?
Yeah, if you can just make a second, then we can go through all the details. Yes, second by Mr. Francis, discussion.
So it's the first permit approval is for six months?
Correct.
And then he might come back to see us, you know, without any violations or exceeding any noise ordinance or anything like that to make it a violation of this first situation?
Yeah, he would go to the administration to ensure that there was, but the six months, say he starts now, he would, he would get the end of the season, and then he would need to go back to the administration sometime between, say, we approve this now, and I think they have a one month for people to oppose it, but, right? So that six month would take him to the springtime, basically. So before he reopens for the spring, he would need to come back, and then it would be one year, every year at the springtime, before the season opens, he would need to come back and, and make sure that there have been no egregious violations.
Are we doing this on an annual basis after that?
I, I did six months and then up to three years. I mean, we can make it longer if you guys want, or make it on an annual basis, but I just figured if by six, the first time, you know, because the six month will get us to the end of this season, and then every year, and then after that point, if he's still there, and hopefully he's, you know, followed the rules, and he can then move into the same direction as every other business in town.
I definitely agree on that, because, I mean, he's always shown that, you know, these last two events that, you know, he doesn't have to trust the residents. And so I think his definition would definitely.
I'm not aware of the last two events?
The, yeah, the last two, when there was, when that surpassed 11:30, he did a concert.
How long ago?
So then that's why the residents are really upset, because, I mean, if you're doing it without a permit, and you're exceeding the noise ordinance, and going back, going to 11:30 at night.
Was that before he came here?
No, 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 that was it.
After he?
After this started?
So I think that's why I agree with these stipulations, and, you know, just to let the residents also know that we understand and help them counter. So I definitely agree on some of the stipulations that we're seeing from the office.
Okay. Further discussion? Mr. Vigliati?
Yeah, so one of the things he wanted was seven days for live entertainment. There's some, there was some language in there about having live entertainment for seven days, and he used the rationale that Cinco de Mayo might fall on a Monday. So I thought maybe we, our language could say that he has the right for live music on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, plus whatever holidays come.
Special events.
Like, you know, St. Patrick's Day, Cinco de Mayo, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day, whatever, you know, typical outdoor, yeah, if they, if they don't fall on a weekend, then he would have the right to have live entertainment on that day. And then for the remainder of the time, Monday through Thursday, there's no live music.
Okay. Mr. Urbanski?
Might I recommend, if that's gonna be a condition that's being entertained, that maybe the holiday be, or the special event that doesn't fall on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday be approved by the Planning and Zoning Administrator, just so we're not, you know, live bands for Jelly Bean Day, or, you know, it's National Hot Dog Day, or, I don't know.
I wonder if, I mean, one of the things I included in there was that Monday through Thursday, all, all entertainment ends at 8:00 PM. I don't know if that gets, gets everybody out of that window, and that's acceptable, or if you'd rather restrict it to the week, from the weekdays?
I, you know, to me, it just seemed like a nice compromise. You know, I mean, if his rationale is that he wants to have the option to have live music on a, you know, a recognized holiday that doesn't fall, but I, I mean, can't we just list it to these, whatever, five? I mean, these are usually the ones where people might go out to a place to listen to live music.
I think we're making it complicated, because if we do that, I mean, you have Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday already, four days out of the week.
Well, my recommendation is not for Thursday, mine is for Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then whatever big, kind of go-to-a-bar-type holidays that would come.
Yeah, just clarify, clarify that, Mike, if you could. So you said Monday?
Yeah, so I, I had said that Sundays, all entertainment would cease by 6:00 PM. Monday through Thursday, all entertainment would cease by 8:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday, 10:00 PM. And, and if, you know, if we saw the, the need to decrease that Friday to Saturday to 9:00 PM, or, you know, again, whatever you guys think, but I'm just trying to lay down some guidelines to start with.
I think it'd probably be best if he, I think, going along with Mr. Urbanski's recommendation, it'd probably be best if he articulated to the P&amp;Z administration any day that would not fall into the established pattern. You know, like, always you get, like, like Fourth of July is always a good one to go after, because it doesn't consistently fall on a Monday, which is the aberration of normal holidays.
Well, and if you wanted. If you wanted to say Friday, Saturday, and holidays even.
But what's a holiday? You know? I mean, Cinco de Mayo is not a legal holiday.
Over the summer, you've got Memorial Day, you've got July 4th, you've got Cinco de Mayo, and that's it, maybe Labor Day.
And Labor Day, yeah.
So.
Columbus Day, Veterans Day, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, I would just say if I, if I was gonna include holidays that would, would, would be, I guess, going out and having a good time holidays?
Yep.
I'd say Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, and Cinco de Mayo are the four summer warm-weather season holidays, so.
And we could throw them a bone and throw St. Patrick's Day in there, too, because that's a.
Yeah, but that, and more often, we could, but more often than that, nobody's gonna be outside, just large, just call it.
Well, you know, they used to have them in Stratford Center, you know, McCoys used to throw quite a, quite a party there, so that's why I brought that.
And if you wanted to include those five days in the Friday and Saturday? Friday, Saturday, and these five holidays?
Yeah. Further discussion from members? I mean, I have a list of questions I want to make, but I'll let everybody else go first.
I, yeah, I mean, I have a couple more. I know that, you know, I, I guess he's, I'm not sure, maybe this is a question for, with the, the governor's, or is it M7, where, that allows him, is that what he's using as justification to be able to serve alcohol across the street from, because I feel like, isn't that supposed to be for people to be like, outside, like, on the sidewalk as opposed to inside their restaurant? Am I, am I quoting the wrong number, but?
I think you're talking about 7MM, but, and I, it's an excellent point, and, you know, it was just mentioned to the chairman that I, I think you need to make a decision on this application as if none of those executive orders were in place.
Right.
Because, you know, it's across the street, it's owned by different parties, so the accommodation that the governor is giving to, as you said, allow you to have something on the sidewalk, or is totally different than you giving him permission to do something on this separate property in terms of giving a zoning approval.
Right, so then I think that, you know, if, if he's gonna, if people are gonna drink, if they're gonna have alcohol, it has to be purchased on that parcel, whatever he's calling it, Seawall Park. You know, like, they can't buy it in Little Pub and then walk across the street and crack it open and drink it, you know? They can drink it there.
And I'll just, I'll just add that the only reason they're able to have a service bar over there is that the town is interpreted with, and this is across the entire town, I mean, there are some restaurants that have no sidewalk, that have no parking lots, and there is language in there, it doesn't require these outdoor dining establishments to be onsite or even on an abutting site. It says nearby sites. So there were places up at Paradise Green, or places in downtown Stratford that are not onsite, they're not abutting the site, and they have outdoor dining allowed there. So we just afforded this applicant the same that we gave everyone else, which was, it signed off by fire, police, health, planning and zoning building, to allow them to be there. So you're correct, if this was to get approved, this would override. Now there's a use on the site, the use that's approved, they are no longer being able, they're no longer gonna be able to claim this as their outdoor dining area, and if they want to serve alcohol, they have to come and get a liquor permit to actually serve now on this site, either restaurant, cafe, beer and wine, whatever it is they end up wanting the vibe to be down there and the type of alcohol service. So I think they were just moving one piece at a time here, they're trying to get the use approved, and if they got the use approved, they have to come back and get a liquor, a permanent, not temporary, permanent liquor permit approved for the site.
Okay.
Hope that explains it.
Yeah, no, that, that's fine, all right. But, yeah, like, my, my concern is, you know, what was described as buying the alcohol in, you know, Little Pub and then bringing, you know, bringing it across the street or bringing it. And then my last thing would also be the idea of food being, you know, you come with your QR code, and you get the menu, and then the food is prepared at Little Pub and brought across Washington Parkway into that space. There's no crosswalk that goes across Washington Parkway. He said he had a propane tank and a grill, so whatever food he offers in that space should be food that's prepared in that space.
I do remember the applicant, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I do remember the applicant stating that he would be willing to have a crosswalk installed to, from the corner to across the street. I'm not sure if that satisfies any of the concerns from the commission, but I remember the applicant stating that.
Or even from, from the entrance to Seawall Park perpendicular to the street, over to the sidewalk at.
The opening, yeah, but the opening line, like, so there's a, there's a crosswalk that goes from the end of that parking strip to Little Pub.
Yeah.
And then the opening to the Seawall place is halfway up the block, you know, so it's not.
But if you do, if you do the opening there, you know, or you do the crosswalk up there?
Yeah.
That's how people are gonna come in, and, you know, and this is a secondary one, but this is also.
So they would have to, they would have to eliminate some parking spaces to get the crosswalk to go.
Or they'd have to, or they'd have to walk through. Then I, I wouldn't say they would eliminate town parking spaces, and I don't, I don't know exactly where it aligns with the, with the parking, but I wouldn't recommend.
Either that, right, you said one opening, you might just have to move it to, like, closer to the corner.
Yeah, yeah. Or move, move, move the, move the opening over to the existing crosswalk, have the opening at that spot, so he can, you know, so he can utilize the crosswalk. Like Mr. Vigliati said, I think the crosswalk is closer to the turn. You know, but it does connect to the sidewalk, so they would have to walk from the sidewalk, down a little bit, and over, but for public safety, I think that's, that's, you know, much better option than trying to have people cut through parking spaces that are on, on, you know, Washington Parkway there, or whatever.
And, and I would also, I would almost recommend that it be placed in the spot that's, you know, approved maybe by the traffic, traffic commission here, since, you know, they may be able to figure out where is gonna be the safest location, even if it's inconvenient for people carrying food across the street for takeout. It's gonna be the safest place. My worry is about having it too close to the corner or around the turn, is that I think, you know, I listen to the radio, I always hear, most accidents are on a left-hand turn when someone's taking a left. So, you know, I would say, I would leave it to the, I would recommend leaving it to the discretion of the traffic authority to determine where that crosswalk should go.
Traffic authority or traffic, traffic commission?
The traffic commi, well, it's the traffic authority.
Authority.
Yeah.
Or we could say that they can't do it.
Or you can say they can't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let me make sure I understand, so post-executive order world, and I realize that, and I've seen the latest updates that, on the outdoor dining, and, I mean, I know it's becoming a big thing, but just pretending that they just expire tomorrow morning. Is all of this still permitted under our regulations? No.
No, that would go back to a vacant lot period.
So right, so he would, the executive orders aside, they are not, a restaurant is not allowed to serve food in a lot that is not part of their restaurant right now?
Certainly not as a right.
Okay.
Not without some text amendments or special approvals.
Okay. Good to know.
And then, I guess, if we're gonna allow them to walk across, there's no sidewalk. Like, I've been down at Seawall, and I've seen people use his lot that want to go to Riley's, you know, and they come out of that lot, and then there's, you know, they have to walk around the perimeter of that parcel to get around to Riley's, and there's no, there's no sidewalk, you know, they, they kind of walk in sand or, or, you know, along the, the side of the street, and if you're, I don't know, like, if you're gonna be carrying trays of food, or I don't imagine whatever it is they're gonna offer, it seems to me there should be some, you know, consideration of putting a walkable path, you know, that you're not walking on the curb, or you're not walking in sand, you should be able to walk on a, on a sidewalk.
Absolutely, and, you know, bear in mind that, you know, per the, the motion that we're discussing right now, I don't recall if there was any limitation on the amount of time for food, but this could conceivably going to 10:00 PM or shortly there before.
I would, I was just making some notes, one of the things that I would include in would be, and I shortened up the, the Friday, Saturday holidays to 9:00 PM, but that the place would have to cease operations, you know, serving food, serving alcohol, everybody out of the place, closing, a closing time, so to speak, one hour after the, the end of entertainment, and I'll make that as an amendment, but.
Well, actually, but that's not where I was going with that, actually. My, my point was that even with the 9:00 PM, you know, like, let's just say right now, sunset is around, what, 7:30, 8 o'clock now? So, I mean, under this scenario, people could be transporting food and drink in the dark across the street.
Well, it's pretty well lit up down there, I think, but.
Still.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
We have streetlights, and maybe, maybe he's, if you want to require that he put a streetlight at the opening, you know, that, again, traffic authority, but, you know, streetlight at the, at the opening, so it's, it's lit, you know?
Further discussion? Otherwise, I'll, I got a few questions. All right. Mr. Urbanski?
I just have one item, because it's related, and before we go off on any other topic, our zoning enforcement officer mentioned, just wanted to clarify, this is not, when we're talking about a six-month, then three sequential one-year approvals, these are, they're not seasonal, this isn't summer, so if they want to do, like I think Dan mentioned, you know, Christmas caroling with the bonfire, bonfires, and some things like that, we're talking about the six months starting from, let's just say, I don't know, September 15th, whatever. They are then given six months over the, through the fall, over the winter, towards next spring, and then they would come back, their training wheels were, it's all year. We're not just talking, six months doesn't start in next spring.
Six, the six-month timeframe would start on the date of our approval?
Good.
And, and, you know, beyond the, you know, the opposition period, whatever you call it, and so whenever that, whenever, whenever it's enacted, but that would get him through this season into probably pre-St. Patrick's Day, and then prior to doing it, but it gives him time to shut it down, or whatever it is, he's not, we don't want, we don't want to have that timeframe start like in July, you know, where he's, where he's mid-season, you know, get it stuck, make that approval time preseason, so he either can tear it all down or do something different, but not like when he's in the middle of all of it, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So my question here deals with how this fits into the waterfront business district, WF, correct? That's the, that is the classification that it falls under right now. Just to go through this, so that we're all clear, there. Just to go through this so that we're all clear, there is brought up by a few of the speakers that there's differentiations between marine uses and non-marine uses. So as I understand it here, marine uses are boat docks, slips, piers, wharves, launching ramps, marinas, recreational, commercial fishing, shipyards, boat rental, yacht clubs, marine research labs, parks, open space and public recreational facilities, I'll come back to that one. Marine harbor, police, harbor master and other marine enforcement, marine storage accesses, uses, incidental to water dependent use, including dispensing of fuels to boats and so on. Further allows restaurants excluding drive-in facilities, retail and services administrations, residential as long as it is compatible. And there's something in here about a, I guess it's part of mixed use or something. But then it says prohibited uses, uses not specifically stated are prohibited. No use of land in this district or the provision of utilities or other facilities shall support the use of vessels as living quarters. Okay, that's not really pertinent. So my question is, does this use that is proposed and is by the definition stated in their document as a outdoor dining and entertainment facility fall into the classification of the waterfront district? And I think my answer is not completely. There's parts of it that it does. Obviously of this, the fact that Marnix is there or Marnix and now was there and now Little Pub is there, that's in my mind, the restaurant use that has been there since probably before I was born. So now I guess my question then is, since this is not exclusively a restaurant, but yet food being served there under the auspices of an executive order, does this fall into any of the other categories that would, that would have it as part of the waterfront business district? And the only one that I think it comes close to is parks, open space and public recreational facilities. So does it fall into any of those three? Not exactly in my mind. Park in my mind is something like Short Beach, like Roosevelt Forest, something with public access maintained by the town. Open space is unattended or left areas with, preserved for the community, which again, this doesn't fall into. And a public recreational facility in my mind is something along the lines of like our golf course, where it's something that the recreation department oversees and so on. I mean, the public would have access to this, maybe, may or may not be on a per fee basis. But again, I have to sort of stretch to say that it falls cleanly under the permitted use of the waterfront harbor, waterfront business district. And I think that was also some of the concerns that the waterfront harbor management committee made in their negative recommendation towards that. So just citing that into the record. So I'm already having some problems and we can debate, debate this, trying to see if we legally fit into the legal definition of the district that it's actually sitting in, which we changed to last year. I also want to talk a little bit about the parking situation down there. And I understand that the amendment before us is that it's limited to 92 people. And I will ask either, if someone can walk me through the parking calculation on this site because I have to say, I was not able to completely understand if there is parking sufficient to accommodate a facility that would be holding up to 92 people, so.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, ninety-six, thank you. If we had enough sufficient to do that right now. And so we'll, we'll talk to that. And then my other legal question here is also, and I know nobody likes it, but unfortunately we just, I'm not in a position to say we enforce the rules that we like and we ignore the ones that we don't, but there is that pesky rule about outdoor music. And given our druthers, we probably should change that. But that was not part of this application, so I still have to rely upon that as still the standing law of the town. So, Mr. Bansky, if you can walk me through the parking situation, I would be much appreciative of that.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. So when initially reviewing the parking calculation, there was, there was no parking shown on their plan.
Mm-hmm.
And so one of my initial staff comments was, well, they needed a bit of revised plan so that we can get an understanding as to, I had, we had an idea of the use. So the use was section 12.5.5. This is the parking calculation for auditoriums, churches, theaters, assembly halls, stadiums. So we kind of grouped this into, you know, the enter, an entertainment use. So for those, those uses, they require one off-street parking space for every four seats or one parking space for every 200 square feet of structure. So if we were to say, and the last item, actually I should finish, the last part to that regulation is or whichever is greater, either the square footage requirement or by seat requirement. So if we went by the square footage, you know, of built structure, they have two or three containers, maybe with a footprint of 150 square feet each, a phone booth, you know, a couple built structures, maybe there would be a small, and at the time, there was no plan for the bandshell, maybe a 200, 300 square foot bandshell. I mean, that's getting us maybe 10 parking, 10 parking spaces. So we did the calculation based, I had him provide his total seat count, which was, I don't remember exactly, maybe it's 25, 24, I think it was 24 picnic tables with, at four per people per table. That's an average, sometimes there are six, sometimes there's two. We discussed the average and it made sense to me of how he came to his average. And then, so it's one space, one parking space for every four seats. And with 24 tables, you require 24 parking spaces. I believe, I don't have the plan right here, but I, I know after the last meeting, they had an excess of, I believe, five or six parking spaces. So there's not always a parking calculation for every individual use. So what we typically, what's typically done is we will find them, the use that we feel is either most compatible and if there's nothing close, then we say, look, you're going to have to propose a text amendment for a parking calculation for your use. I felt that it fit within this entertainment kind of assembly gathering area use, so I felt comfortable using that. Obviously, I have to feel comfortable with the application before I bring it to the zoning commission. However, it is your determination to interpret the zoning regulations to see whether or not you, you think it makes sense and if it's good for the town. So, you know, I leave that to your good judgment and, but that's how we arrived at the parking calculation.
So to summarize, where, how many do you think we have on site? How many are required and how many do you think we have?
Twenty-four required.
Twenty-four required.
Twenty-four required, and I'm pulling up the site plan.
He says 29, I guess, and then six auxiliary.
Is it 29, that's, oh, here it is.
Twenty-nine spaces.
Yep, 29 spaces. So an additional five parking spaces.
Would the requirements be different if it was a restaurant?
Yes, they would be. For a restaurant, I believe it's one parking space for every 75 square feet of restaurant space, significantly more. You know, I think we had the Sonic that came through that was down on 225 Lordship Boulevard. It was a 2,500 square foot Sonic and required 43 parking spaces, which is a lot. We ask a lot in terms of parking for restaurants.
And he, and he did also say though that they, they do valet parking where they, so there, I'm looking at the, the site plan.
Yep.
There are 29 line spaces, he said they do valet parking. They fill in the spaces in between, they could probably park another, you know, 20 cars in that space if they did some type of valet park. He, he said they do that, I don't know if he, he does or has, but he said they have the potential to do that, which would, you know, add to the.
Which is fine for me as long as they meet the, the minimum requirement.
Yeah, yeah. But it's 29 plus the potential for more, if, if what he says is correct.
He doesn't remember my big hitters. Any further discussion for members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If everybody's done, I'd like to make some amendments.
Certainly, sir.
To my motion. All right, so the first would be that alcohol is only allowed to be consumed that has been purchased at Seawall Park. I'd like to switch, switch the language to say Fridays and Saturdays, Fridays, Saturdays, St. Patrick's Days, Cinco de Mayo, July 4th, Memorial Day and Labor Day. And to reduce that time to 9:00 PM as well instead of the 10:00 PM. The closing time, and when I say closing time, I mean the same as in a bar, everybody has to be out. And I, that's the term I use, closing time, but everybody's got to be out, you know. You, you don't got to go home, but you can't stay here. So closing time would be one hour after the lapse of the entertainment time.
Whether that be nine or 10?
I would go with nine o'clock on the Fridays and Saturdays. I would go 8:00 PM on Mondays and Thursdays, and that was my original motion, was 8:00 PM on Mondays, Thursdays and Sundays at 6:00 PM. So everybody would have to be out of the place.
One hour.
You know, one hour, 7:00 PM on Sundays, 9:00 PM Mondays through Thursdays and 10:00 PM on, on Fridays, Saturdays and the holidays. That the traffic authority approve the opening location and, and if required, lighting at the entrance.
Opening location meaning?
The, the entrance to Seawall Park.
The pedestrian entrance or the motor vehicle entrance?
The pedestrian entrance. And whether they determine it's best to have it at the, at the existing crosswalk or to move it and add another crosswalk, that would be their authority to make that decision. And that would be binding to this approval. So those, that would be my amendment.
Does that also include them, with the purpose of them bringing food from the restaurant across the street?
If, well, this is my amendment and if you'd like to add that, you know.
I'm just making, so you're not, you're not, that's not part of why you're including.
I, you, you mean the, the traffic authority?
And, and no, in terms of like, you know, making sure the crosswalk goes across Washington Parkway because one of the things that he had suggested was he'd be able to serve food from the restaurant. You know, you order it, you go to the, whatever it is, Seawall Park, and then you order food and they bring it from the restaurant across the street.
I, I think he said that it was all going to be done on-site.
What, the food?
Yeah.
Let's take a look and see what he actually says. I was just looking at that section.
He talks about QR codes and, and bringing it, you know.
But, so I had said alcohol only allowed to be consumed that has been purchased at Seawall Park. If you guys preferred, I could say alcohol and food allowed to be consumed that has only been purchased at Seawall Park.
So he says food service would be a continuation of the Little Pub dining in a to-go method with onsite beverage service and ice cream snack bar offerings. Hot food orders will be taken by servers or sent directly to Little Pub Kitchen by guests via use of a QR code. And guests will be able to enjoy meals delivered to their tables in a to-go fashion. Food will be prepared in Little Pub Kitchen. On occasion, Little Pub will provide onsite food preparation in the form of barbecue cookouts, lobster shack type seafood and clam bakes and/or foods with the appropriate permits and approvals.
And so, well, but in my mind, I think it would, to, to create less of an impact on the neighbors, having the food cooked at Little Pub and brought over would eliminate the smoke, the smell, a lot of those issues. I mean, having a small little hot dog stand or whatever it might be, an ice cream shack, I don't think, but if he's got a full grill going over there, service the place. And I don't think we should approve a drinking establishment that doesn't have access to food. So I would think with the traffic authority, creating a way to get a safe way to get from Little Pub's side of the street to Seawall side of the street would be a good thing. And to allow them to bring food across, I think would be a good thing because it, it doesn't have a big, it doesn't detract from the neighborhood as much, doesn't create as much of a nuisance for the neighbors, so. But the alcohol can be served on-site and shouldn't be brought over by, by patrons. So I, I only included alcohol in mine and, you know, if you guys determine that that's what you wanted. But I think it would be detrimental to our, the direction we're trying to go into if we mandated he couldn't bring food over.
Okay, so let's do these one by one. We could do multiple amendments. I have no problem with that. So Mike, your amendment.
So I, I had five, I think five amendments.
Because I have it here.
Four.
A three-foot split rail fence.
That's the original.
Right, you want those on there too?
Yeah.
Those are part of the original, yeah.
With a two-foot shrub in front of the fence, no stand-up service, one opening there, ninety, no more than 96 people. Monday through Thursday, 8:00 PM, Sunday, 6:00 PM, Friday, Saturday, and I know five holidays, but I'm not going to list them until 9:00 PM. And here to sound ordinance, six months approval with three one-year additional approvals. The structure demands shall not to exceed 12 feet in high and direct sound to Long Island. And then over here, we have closing time, one hour after entertainment, traffic authority approval for the pedestrian location, if we, if required, lighting at location. Do I have everything?
Alcohol only allowed to be consumed that has been purchased at Seawall Park.
All right.
And with, with the town's noise ordinance, I had no amplified music and the music must, and the entertainment must adhere to the town's sound ordinances.
Okay, what did you just say?
No amplified music.
No, all right, that's with the sound ordinance.
And it must adhere, any, any entertainment must adhere to the town's sound ordinance. And then I had the alcohol only allowed to be consumed that has been purchased at Seawall Park.
Okay.
Okay, so let's vote on just, is there a second to your motion, sir?
Yeah, be on.
Mr. Francis? Okay, just on the items that Mr. Henrik has, has asked for his, in his amendment and then will obviously enter more. Any further discussion on those items?
I just, I.
Mr. Vigliotti?
So as far as the music goes, where your suggestion is for seven days? Or, or is it just the weekends and then the holidays?
With this, I, I gave him a seven-day window with time limitations to those. So Monday and Thursday would be 8:00 PM, Sunday would be 6:00 PM. And I can't see, I'm not saying he won't, but I can't see somebody having entertainment seven days a week, but, and then, and then the weekends and the holidays with a 9:00 PM end time.
Mr. Bansky? Mr. Henrik, could you repeat the, the part about the holidays and the specific holidays, if those are still applying to us?
Okay, so it would be Friday, Saturday and holidays with a 9:00 PM end of, end of entertainment time. And those holidays would be St. Patrick's Day, Cinco de Mayo, July 4th, Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Thank you.
And, and if you guys, I mean, again, it's up to you, but if you wanted to cut a few days off the weekday, Monday through Thursday, or, you know, just do Thursday, 8:00 PM, the weekends and Sunday, you know, whatever, just.
Yeah, I would propose just cutting those, those days, giving, giving the residents a break from, even give them the opportunity to have those days. Because he, I mean, he could very well just have music all those days. So if we just cut that opportunity so we know there's a break.
Would you?
And mu, and, and music and entertainment from Monday until, you know, Wednesday night, then Thursday he can.
Would, would you be okay with eliminating Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday and leaving Thursday?
Yes.
All right, so that, that I'm going to include as, as another amendment, that the timeframe would, would be Thursdays, 8:00 PM, Sundays, 6:00 PM, and then the Friday, Saturday and holidays. 9:00 PM, yeah.
Thursdays, 8:00 PM, Friday, Saturday, 9:00 PM. Thursdays, 8:00 PM, Friday, Saturday, 9:00 PM, Sunday, 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, there, there would be then five, five amendments that we would be voting on.
Okay, are we clear on what those five are? Sorry. Yeah. Okay.
I can read them again if you guys.
And I believe I have them all, but I also have the ability to review the tape and listen to them to make sure I'm getting them word for word.
Yeah, so just, so it would be traffic authority approval for the opening, closing time one hour after the elapsed, alcohol that will only be consumed that's been purchased there, switching the Friday, Saturday, and holiday, adding the holidays, and reducing it to 9:00 PM, and then there would be no Monday through Wednesday entertainment.
Would you like that to be stated as a condition, there was no music to be played Monday through Wednesday?
Yes, that's part of my amendment, yes.
No live music or entertainment?
No, yes, correct.
Okay, further discussion on those amendments? Okay, all in, shall we, let's do, let's do roll calls on these. Mr. Vigliotti?
Aye.
Mr. Francis?
Aye.
Ms. Manos?
Aye.
Mr. Henrik?
Aye.
Chair votes no, carries 4-1. Further discussion on the amendments? Or any further amendments? Listen, just one question before we move to the forward, to the, um, uh, final votes. Should, when the executive orders expire, how does this, what happens?
Well, it depends on what happens with this. So, there are two scenarios. If this project get, application gets denied, and the executive orders for outdoor dining expire, that becomes a vacant lot with the last known use being a restaurant. If this application gets approved, and the, if this application gets approved, the executive order for outdoor dining no longer applies to this site, because now there is a permanent use that applies to this site. There are, it is an outdoor dining establishment now. So the site is now used for outdoor dining. So essentially, the, uh, the liquor permit that is allowing them to have alcohol at this site is no longer valid. So the applicant will then, if this gets approved and the, the executive order expires, they're allowed to do live, they're allowed to do live music there and bring some food over, until they secure a liquor permit of whatever sort that they're looking for, whether that be full restaurant liquor, or beer and wine, or whatever type of permit that they end up asking for to this commission.
Okay.
So, I have a quick question to that point. So, with the governor's executive orders, and hypothetically us passing this, would the more restrictive, would our, would our, our passing of this trump a, a governor's executive order even if ours were more restrictive?
Can you, one more time?
So, anyway, so hypothetically, we pass this. So we have two, we have, we have our passage, and we have the, the governor's executive order. If the governor's executive order allows him to have, say, hypothetically, live entertainment seven days a week, but we have a, a passed legislation here that says he's got restrictions, can he say, nope, governor's restrictions say I can do this seven days a week? And, and he could do that now with us even denying this, because the governor's orders trumps. But, but would we be, in sense, putting a more restrictive regulation on this property and trumping the governor's executive order by passing this?
Well, I'll, I'll give my opinion before I turn it over to the town attorney. It's my understanding that state law trumps local ordinance, state statutes trump local ordinance. So, you know, if that were to happen, the state law would prevail, but I'll let the town, uh.
So I think it's a really good question, because what's allowing him now to use a piece of property across the street for his outdoor dining is that it was, it otherwise did not have a use. But if you give it an approval, then it will have an approval, so it's sort of, but it won't have a liquor permit until he goes and gets one. So, it, it's a, it's an interesting question. I mean, I think that once the property, so, let's just forget, forget about this particular use now. If you had two properties that were next to each other, both of which were improved and being used as restaurants, the guy next door can't come and do outdoor dining on your property. So, I mean, there is an, sort of an interplay here between Little Pub and Platypus, because he's not asking for permission for Little Pub to have a permit on this vacant lot. He's asking for Platypus to have the right to have a permit on this, to do what he wants to do. And right now, he's just sort of taking advantage of the executive orders, as everybody else is, to say, where is it that I can, you know, expand outside for social distance, and to make sure that, you know, because of the outdoor dining orders? So, there's an interplay there that's, that, you know, I, I think that once it has an approval for something else, like, let's say you put up a, let's say he came in for a permit that wasn't related to the kind of business that Little Pub is now doing. Then, that permission for the guy across the street, because they're really separate entities, to use that vacant lot for outdoor dining would, would no longer be in place. I mean, I think that's the best way to look at it. So, I mean, I think what he's trying to do is get permission, you know, going forward, but when would it be effective? When would the new use be effective? And, I think then he's, he's stuck with his new use, and if the new use doesn't allow him to have liquor, because he doesn't yet have a permit for that property, I mean, I suppose if the property were to remain vacant, you know, to remain that the, that the new use was not yet executed, could he still then use it under the executive order as his outdoor dining? I mean, I think Stratford has been quite generous with where they're allowing people to, to use outdoor space, whether it's on the beach in front of the Little Pub, or, I think you'd have to look to.
All the way out to the parking lots?
Well, you'd, you'd have to look to what Stratford has said about what property that you can use for outdoor dining while this, you know, while we're in this, this period. Some, some towns have been more restrictive, and some have been more generous with, with what you can, what you can do. But it's an excellent question, I mean.
So, go ahead, Mr. Francis.
The one thing I'll add to that is, and I, I mentioned it earlier, but I may have not clearly have articulated it, is they're only allowed to do on the vacant lots under the executive order whatever was approved across the street. So, if Little Pub was approved to do live music, and, I'm trying to think of something else, and has a liquor permit, a full restaurant liquor, that use is now transferred, is allowed to be done at this outdoor dining site. You cannot seek new approvals during the executive order. If you didn't have it before, you can't get it now. You couldn't ask for it now. So, it's just going back to, you know, if this use was approved, it essentially is now the use of record, it's its own separate business. You, as Attorney Sullivan mentioned, if there were two restaurants, you wouldn't be allowed to go use your restaurant on the neighbors. And, um, I guess the only way that they would be able, let's say they went for a liquor permit and got denied. They got denied for a liquor permit here as the subsequent step. Then, they could potentially, I think, you know, give us written confirmation of an abandonment of the use to say, look, we know you guys approved this, we are acknowledging the abandonment of this use and do not want this outdoor entertainment use, because we would rather use the outdoor dining for the next year and a half, because it's there, because it's good for, till 2022, I believe, now. So.
So, let me just make sure I understand this. So, Little Pub and Platypus are two distinct business entities. Is that correct, or are they the same?
My understanding is, this, my understanding is that this application is Platypus, it's not Little Pub. They just happen to have the same person, the same body that's, that's representing them both. So, if you think about it, Little Pub is, is a separate entity from who's asking to develop this, this property. And so this idea that like, well, you can carry food across the street as if it were connected, it's one thing to say, well, you can buy food across the street and bring it and eat it at our picnic tables, you know, because we have this arrangement with our neighboring, our neighboring business. But, you know, I, I think you have to be careful not to mix them too much, because the application didn't come in with Little Pub and Platypus asking for this, like, together. They're, they're separate entities.
So, he gets the privilege under the executive order of extending it because he is a principal of both Little Pub and Platypus. Is that correct?
Well.
Do, do we know, though, that, do we know that Platypus, Little Pub is the name of the restaurant? Do we know who the liquor permittee or the owner is? Is Platypus perhaps the owner of Little Pub and the permittee of Little Pub?
I don't know, and I didn't see any of that in the record. I mean, I, I listened to the tape, I didn't hear any of that. You know, it was a little sort of loosey-goosey as to the relationship between the two, the, the two parties.
And I, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know who is the corp that owns Little Pub. Is it Little Pub Inc.? Is it some other entity? I, I don't know. You know, maybe, maybe the way to get around the, the things maybe being too close is you can do takeout from, you can bring takeout from Little Pub, you set up your own rules who can bring food to Seawall Park. If you want it, you can bring Domino's there, you, you know, feel free. But if it's only Little Pub, then feel, then feel free. But maybe, maybe the zoning commission doesn't allow for the walking of food by Little Pub staff across the street.
I'm not even going down there. What I'm going down, the road I'm going down is, is we are making the assumption that he is entitled to this usage, because it is presupposed that they are one in the same. And what I'm saying is that if they are not one in the same, or if, let's say, the gentleman sheds his interest in Little Pub during the time of the executive order, is this now severed? His ability or his legal right to use it, is that severed?
My understanding is that this application to Platypus, for them to do this on property that they own, which happens to be across the street from Little Pub. Which, which happens to be across the street. My understanding is this application was filed by Platypus, use of the property that happens to be across the street from Little Pub, and I didn't see any application from, from Little Pub, and I don't know what the corporate ownership interest, you know.
Platypus Partners is the owner of 60 Beach Drive, 9 Washington Parkway, 24 Washington Parkway, 40 Beach Drive. So they own 40 Beach Drive, they own 24 Washington Parkway, they own 60 Beach Drive, and they own 9 Washington Parkway.
9 Washington Parkway.
Is what?
Or is it the hotel? Because the Little Pub's listing is 10 Washington, well, actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's 10 Washington Court. Let me see what, 10, what Little.
It, it seems to have encircled in, in this GIS map from the town, Marnix and the parking lot.
10 Washington Parkway, Stratford, Connecticut.
But if you look at the GIS map that comes up on the town, it's got that circle.
Two separate lots.
Well, let me see, let me take, click on it. Yeah, it says nine Wa, it, it calls it out as, it says number 10, but it calls it out as 9 Washington Parkway, and the owner is Platypus Partners LLC. So it would be, I guess to that point, it would be owned by the same entity that owns Little Pub and the hotel.
Okay.
Um, just so, um, I think I may have misunderstood some things also that has been brought up. Um, so basically, if we approve this, and say he sells it to some other entity, we've already approved this in the executive order, it does not expire under the executive order. It will be that type of use of land here and after. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That kind of worries me, because I was under the impression, all right, the executive order is until 2022, and that would dictate what we're approving. I don't know if I'm ready to approve that lot for that particular entertainment forever on, in, in Stratford. I don't think I'm ready to do that.
Considering all the, just as a legal question, considering all the question marks regarding the executive orders, do we have the ability to make, to, um, link this to the executive order? Like, the approval is good until such time as 7MM expires, or is not renewed, or?
I don't think that you're allowed to do that, because you're not allowed to, to base approvals on the executive orders.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think he ever came in asking us to, and, and I think he was pretty clear that there is an executive order that allows him to do that, and he wants to do this. And, and I think what we're passing is more restrictive than the executive orders. And, and, and so he can go on for two years, you know, and do whatever he wants over there, and just call executive order. But if we pass a more restrictive regulation now, it limits his ability to do what he can do there, and it, and so long as he behaves correctly, it, it'll continue to go on. But there are, there are stopgaps there in case he decides to go over the top, and, you know, maybe bring in a, bring in a, an amplified music beyond the timeframes, if he's habitually doing that. You know, if the sound violates our town's sound ordinances, if he overpopulates the area, if he allows people to walk back and forth with liquor. I mean, there's a bunch of stopgaps in here that would keep what he's doing restricted, and I know we've been talking about looking at our town's outdoor entertainment regulations, and we'll have a hard time making any changes if we, um, put restrictions. I mean, I think we've restricted it more than we might, or maybe this might be a guideline to what we'll do if we decide to change our town outdoor entertainment regulations. But if we say no to this, then, um, he'd probably have a case that says we're being subjective or prejudiced by saying no to him and allowing other outdoor entertainment, outdoor entertainment venues to, to, um, continue, or to, or to legally, anyway, just.
But legally, he really can't, because it's, it's an executive order that's overruling anything local anyway. So, but having beer and wine, if this, this executive order was not in place, he would not be able to do that there.
Unless we pass this regulation.
Right, exactly. But we, he would still have to get a liquor permit.
Yeah, and he's still got to.
He wouldn't be able to do that, what he's doing now, he would not be able to do that unless he got a liquor permit for that area.
A liquor permit and approval from us.
And approval from us, correct.
Yeah, and, and part of the process is, if we do approve this this evening, he'll, once, once the executive order expires, he'll have to get a liquor permit, or he will have to get a liquor permit because there's an approval in place, which would override, and I, I don't know if we got to, I understand your answer, but if we approve this, and, and he go, if, if, if we approve this and he goes for a liquor permit, and he gets denied that liquor permit, then he falls back on the executive order, says I don't want this approval, and, and rides that executive order out, and maybe comes up with another plan. But if we approve this, then he now needs to go get a liquor permit in order to continue operations there.
Right, but so like the chairman said, if this executive order was not in place, it wouldn't be in accordance guidelines for us to approve this.
It wouldn't be what?
Because of the waterline designation. So basically, the only reason we are here approving it because we have kind of a leeway because of the executive order. You understand what I'm saying? So I don't want to approve this and make it permanent under the leeway of this executive order. When in reality, if this executive order was not in place, most likely, we would not approve this. If you understand what I'm saying. It would have to, it would be a lot more complicated for him to get this approved. So if the executive order, which is in place from the governor and the state, overruns, overrides our local decisions anyway, why are we such in a rush to approve this when he can do this now as it is? Right? He can actually have this outdoor entertainment now under the executive order without our approval, correct?
Well, part of it's to create some restrictions, part of it because I think he said that, you know, he doesn't want to rely on that, to continue his business practice. He wants to build it now. But I guess I would ask the town attorney, is there anything in our waterfront, in your opinion, in our waterfront district, whatever we call it, that would allow what he's proposing to exist?
So the commission gets to decide what the regulations mean. So you have to look at the list of things that are approved in that district and then decide, do they include the uses that he's proposing? But I do think that if he, if you give him this approval, I think you have to look at the approval as if nothing was there. Under your regulations, what would you permit on that lot? Don't look at it like, is there an executive order in place? Would he be able to do this? Would he not be able to do that? Look at the regulations, look at the uses proposing, look at the zone he's in, and then make a determination whether the regulations permit him to do that. And if they do, then it gets approved. And if they don't, and then, as you said, he has to go get a liquor permit, which, I mean, we don't decide that, you know, that's, the state's going to decide whether he gets a liquor permit separate and apart from any liquor permit that may be across the street. Think of it in the way of, what if the Little Pub gets sold? What if they take that entity and that property and sell it to someone else? Is what you're approving on this property okay? You know, would it get an approval?
And so then, in your legal opinion, is there anything within the waterfront district that would allow us to approve what we're looking at this evening?
Well, it sounds like right now you have a restriction on outdoor music. So if you do have, if you don't permit outdoor music, then on what basis are you granting him permission?
Well, we've given exceptions to that like Joey sees. But what I'm asking, we have, what is it, the waterfront district? What is the exact wording for?
Waterfront.
We have a waterfront district. Is there anything within the uses? And we do, and maybe he's got to go to BZA for, you know, for a variance on or whatever, but we, you know, is there anything within that waterfront district legally that, your legal opinion, that would allow us to approve, to legally approve something in here that fits within the regulations?
Well, I think the chairman read what was permitted in that zone, and the, you know, the closest was, is it a sort of a restaurant? I mean, that was the only one that I heard that, I mean, I didn't parse that regulation. But that's the regulation that you should be interpreting as to whether the uses that are permitted in that zone include the use that he's proposing.
And all those descriptions were non-existent except one that was clearly still minute.
Can you, Mr. Chairman, read those?
I'd be happy to. Okay, so the following are uses are permitted. Marine uses in the waterfront district, the following are considered marine uses. Boats docked slips, piers and wharves, launching ramps, marinas, water-based recreational docks and port facilities. Recreational and commercial fishing and boating facilities, shipyards, boat building and marine repair facilities, boat rental, excursion boats and related facilities, yacht clubs, including uses accessory to them such as swimming pools and tennis courts, marine research labs and related facilities, parks, open space and public recreational facilities, marine police, harbor master and other marine enforcement and service agencies, vertical maritime storage buildings in conjunction with a travel lift facility and general boat storage. Accessory uses customarily incidental to water-dependent uses, including the dispensing of fuels and lubricants to boats, marine-related broker sales and display, marine-related office, retail services, restaurants excluding dine-in facilities, retail and service establishments. And then there's a breakdown on residential, which is not really relevant here. Prohibited uses, uses not specifically stated are prohibited. No use of land in this district or the provision of utilities or other facilities shall support the use of vessels as living quarters.
But it did say, it said retail service restaurants.
It says, let's follow the law. It says, I just lost it, rats. Restaurants excluding drive-in facilities and retail and service establishments.
Excluding drive-in facilities.
Excluding drive-ins.
But it says restaurants.
Yes.
But it's not technically a restaurant.
Well, if you're not going to call this a restaurant, then what would you call it?
It doesn't describe any of those. And that's one of my concerns were, because I remember when the chairman had described them, and none of that kind of fit. So then I was falling back basically on the executive order, which wouldn't even, once we approve it, it's approved. And that executive order does, basically, after that's over, it's approved for that. When I was kind of leaning back on this executive order, and that's what my concerns are.
And, well, if you're not going to call this a restaurant or an extension of a restaurant, I'm not sure what you would call it. It's owned by the same entity if we want to make part of this approval to be that it stays in conjunction with the title of Little Pub, Marnix, the Marnix Building, whatever it is, that this approval is only valid as part of the title with, and I guess that's the legal way to do it, but it's not an easement for anybody else to go over and use it. It's a continuation of the use at Marnix. And if Marnix, Little Pub decides to sell it, they aren't able to sell that separately and have an approval. It has to be, it has to be an extension of the restaurant that currently exists. It cannot be a separate entity.
I mean, your other option here is, you know, and I know, I'm sure the applicant would not be overly enjoyed to do this, is come back with, to amend the zone to allow this. I mean, you know, if you're gonna, we've gone through that definition a couple times here. And, you know, if it's, and there's that disclaimer at the end that says, you know, uses not specifically mentioned are prohibited. If you say restaurants, outdoor dining facilities and entertainment venues, you know, and let's face it, we're at the end of the season here, you know, it's basically August here. And, you know, one of my complaints about this proposal sort of is that it seemed, I'm just going to say haphazardly assembled. And if you're going to go and do these things, you know, I know I'm a little bit of a hard-nose about procedure, but to propose something where there's two zoning regulations that say you cannot do it and expect us to just override it is very optimistic, and I think it could be done in a different way. I think, I mean, overall, I think this would probably work, be a good thing for the town. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion in here about how, you know, we want to make sure that Stratford, people have places to go in Stratford. It's a wonderful thing that people go out to eat in Stratford and people go and entertain it. But when you make shortcuts, now you're causing problems and you're setting precedents, and that gets us into trouble down the road. Just my thoughts.
So again, I would ask, if this is not a restaurant, what is it? And if it is a restaurant, then, and we made it as a part and parcel with the building, the structure called Little Pub, and our approvals were to coincide, be part of the deed, to be only as a part of the entire entity that we call Little Pub, then how could you not call it a restaurant? And, I mean, an outdoor dining facility is a restaurant. It's just an outdoor.
It's an outdoor dining entertainment facility, so it's, you know.
If you're serving food, if you're serving food, it's a restaurant. If you're serving food and alcohol, it's a restaurant. So I don't know what else you would call it.
Food truck's not a restaurant.
It could be called a restaurant.
My other concern is I don't think that the Little Pub property is actually in front of you.
Is what?
The property, the addresses, the property addresses are, they're the vacant lot, right? So Little Pub, whoever owns it, hasn't come before you and asked you to connect them to the property across the street, I mean, obligate them. So, you know, if the application included Little Pub, maybe you could include it. But as it's currently postured, I mean, you just looked up the GIS, I think, right?
Yeah, it's all by the same owner.
But the address of the property that Little Pub is on, is that part of the application? I don't think so.
It is 40 to 60 Beach Drive and 24 Washington Park, what's 24 Washington Parkway? Okay.
They're describing this, they're associated. So we're, this is not even legitimately official that they're partnering with these people. We're assuming that, correct? Well, it says right here in the fourth chapter or fourth paragraph, this is a standalone outdoor dining and entertainment use venue. That they're describing it themselves as a standalone outdoor dining and entertainment use venue.
That just means it's not connected.
Right.
Well, there's no way to connect it.
Well, I mean, but you can, you could say this is connect, you know, I mean, they're not physically connected, but it's, I, they, it's almost as if they want us to consider this separate from Little Pub.
So then four would be a restaurant because they had no association with Little Pub in the first place. This is a standalone outdoor entertainment approval that they want. Not that they're associating with a restaurant. They're going to utilize their services, but they're not together on this approval. So we should take it that way, as this is a standalone approval process for Platypus to get this approval for that entertainment outdoor for the longevity, not just for the executive order. They want to do something more than that after the executive order, in which we would not approve otherwise.
Complicated stuff, huh?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think you raised a good point in the sense that, you know, because, I mean, this has been sort of local news since May. So people have approached me about it, you know, they keep saying they see my name mentioned in, I don't know, the Connecticut Post or whatever, and they ask about it, and what I keep saying is, the applicant is kind of asking us to approve something that doesn't exist at this point in town. And, you know, if there are text amendments or there are special cases that should be considered to make what they're proposing, you know, subject to our approval or would fit better into what we, what regulations already exist. As a Democrat, I love regulations. I mean, you know, and, you know, I'm all for following the rules. You know, I mean, I came up with what I thought would be, you know, fair to everybody. Yeah, and to your point, I think that what this guy's attempting to do would be, it's better than having a vacant lot there. You know, I mean, if there's opportunity for people to go down there and enjoy that, I think that's a good idea. But I also agree that, you know, my frustration is he keeps, you know, it appears he wants us to tell him what he wants as opposed to saying, these are all the things I want. Can I have approval for it? It's kind of like he's, he's making us define for him, you know, and I don't know. So I, the proposals that I suggested, I thought would make it safe and maybe, maybe a viable, a viable thing. But if there are, if there are other regulations that should be adhered to, if there are other approvals he should have, then maybe that's what he needs to know.
And I think, like you said, I mean, it's the end of the season. If our other option is to, for him to go that different avenue that you suggested, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And get those approved, so it makes it easier on us to not just assume things. Because I, I mean, now that I'm sitting here thinking about it, I'm sitting here assuming a lot of things. And those were the reasons why I made those suggestions in my head. And then when Mr. Hendrick had suggested them out loud, I was like, oh, well, I was kind of thinking, putting, you know, a lot of restrictions on it and giving him the opportunity to abide by them and, you know, give good credibility to the residents as well as the zoning commission. But as more information came up and I started realizing, you know, and like you said, we always talk about there should be way more places for Stratford to go. I don't want to go to Milford all the time. I don't want to go to, you know, West Haven. I want to stay local, get something to eat or have fun, you know, and some entertainment, and I love that. Me and my wife go out all the time, so I would definitely love to stay local and just go home really quick. But there are a lot of complication in gray areas here. And I don't want to approve this with those complications, the gray areas still impacting what we're going to decide on. I'd rather be clear on us moving forward.
Excellent points.
Can I just put my two cents? I've had a couple of people say to me, why does Riley's, they took down all their parking, put up a deck, and they have a band every Friday and Saturday night? They have no parking at Riley's whatsoever.
Well, you know, again.
That's what people have said.
And I'll, Mr. Vigliotti, Mr. Francis, since we know that you two are continuing beyond January, I don't know if we're going to have time to look at it, but I think we really need to take a look at that. Right, but nonetheless, it's there, you know, but if it's, so I think this is going to, I think it has to be addressed at some point. But we don't rule on what we want the law to be. We rule on what it is. So let's, you know, be that as it may. I mean, there's other issues here. You know, I haven't even talked about some of the special case situations here, you know, even like the noise. Although I suspect the amendments, I would hope that those would be, would shield it. But, you know, right now, there's two prohibitions that I think we have to leap past in order to vote, to approve it. And that's been my concern on this one right now, and I don't think we're ready to make those two jumps. Further discussion, amendments? They don't come easy, do they? Okay, roll call vote. As amended, Mr. Vigliotti.
No.
Mr. Francis.
No.
Ms. Manos. Mr. Hendrick.
I'm going to clarify my vote.
Certainly, sir.
So we asked why they don't come here. Maybe this is why. But if this is not a restaurant, what is? Our options are, he takes, he takes the governor's executive orders, puts it on steroids, goes crazy down there, and in two years, he sells it.
crazy down there, in two years, he sells it. And you guys have made it clear that you can put a restaurant there, sells it to another restaurant. And again, if this is not a restaurant, I'm not sure what is. If you want to say he has to tie it to his title, make it part of his part and parcel with whatever it is, it is under the same ownership, but, and I think if he goes to court and appeals it, he wins pretty easily. But I'm going to support the, the will of this commission, and I'll vote no on it as well.
Chair votes no. Motion fails, zero in favor, four in opposition. Five, zero, correct, thank you, sorry, long debate, and zero in favor, five in opposition. And before we move on, let me just, I know, commend commissioners, and commend the public, and commend everybody involved in this, this has been a tough application, and, you know, the old joke is, the Senate calls themselves the world's greatest deliberative body, but there was a lot of good deliberation tonight, and I encourage the applicant to follow the process and work to make this a reality, because I think it could be something very good for us. But right now, in its current structure, that's why I voted against it. Okay, do we have any further applications? No, we do not. Okay, absolutely. So, moving on to the approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes at July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting?
We have a couple of amendments on this, a motion by Mr. Hendrick, is there a second? Second by Mr. Vigliotti. Discussion, we have two corrections that the secretary has just informed me of. Just, one is a correction of the name of Christine Doolan, it was.
Yes, I put down Newlan.
It was listed as Newlan, but it's D as in Delta, O-O-L-A-N. And the second correction is, it should be seven seventy-five to.
Seven seventy-five, two, nine seventy-five.
Correct, okay, it should be seven seventy-five to nine seventy-five Lordship Boulevard, it was listed incorrectly in the minutes. Will you accept that as a friendly amendment, folks? Thank you. Any further discussion on the minutes as amended? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Campsite review, forty Beach Drive in Washington, obviously. We still have to vote on it? Okay, can I have a motion to?
So, we had a letter here from John Goucher, and I think it says a campsite review isn't required, the, the material submitted to this office includes a campsite review, plans showing the proposed layout of the outdoor facilities landscape, the project describing how the subject parcel is not located on the waterfront, they're not subject to water-dependent use criteria. I don't know if that includes a campsite review, or?
It does, and, you know, I mean, anything that falls within the coastal boundary that is not exempt from our local regulations, there are some inconsistencies with what our local coastal site plan regulations require, and the states. So we refer to them anyways, and he felt that it didn't require their, the state's review.
Okay.
However, it still gets conducted locally.
And then we need to vote on it still?
Correct.
Motion to approve campsite review?
Motion to approve the campsite review, is there a second? Second by Ms. Manos. Discussion, I'm assuming that a vote to reject, no, a no vote would be appropriate in this situation? Okay.
Since there, Mr. Chairman, since there is no approval for the, the restaurant, outdoor restaurant, I see no need to approve this, so I would be voting against it.
Very good. Any further discussion? Again, a no vote would be the preferred, or the recommended way of addressing this, so all in favor say aye. You didn't listen to me.
It was a motion, it would, it was a.
Was it a motion to approve or?
It was a motion to approve, which is the correct.
Right, so to be consistent, it would be, a no vote would be consistent with our previous actions, okay? So all in favor, I should hear silence, all in favor say aye, all opposed, no?
No.
No.
Okay, is rejected, five, zero. Okay, two fourteen Benton Street, Mr. Bansky.
My notes, one second.
Sorry.
Okay, so this is for a coastal site plan review application to construct three thousand eight hundred and eighty square foot addition for storage for an existing steel fabrication, steel fabrication business located in a light industrial zone. The applicant had, prior to this coastal site plan review, went to the Architectural Review Board, their comments were attached to my memorandum. The parcel lies quite a far distance, actually, away from the coastline, and the property preside, the property is on shorelands, which are upland areas in elevations in excess of the hundred-year stillwater flood level and located within the coastal boundary. We did receive some comments from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, as well as from the, let's see, Architectural Review Board, just let me double check, one more item, the, also from the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission. The Waterfront Harbor Management Commission determined that there were no significant impacts on the harbor management area, and we do have some comments that were received from DEEP, and also from the Engineering Department, and as I mentioned, the Architectural Review Board. It's my recommendation that the proposed application be approved, subject to the following conditions. First, that the applicant must comply with all recommendations made by DEEP in their emails to staff, that the applicant comply with all recommendations that have been made by the town engineer here in Stratford, as well as all recommendations given to the zoning commission by the Architectural Review Board.
And what are those recommendations?
The recommendations include to provide a detailed planting plan when they, they apply for their building permit, to introduce some delineation of the wall panels, to enhance the sign to be more proportion, proportional to the building, and to include some exterior, an exterior lighting plan for the parking lot.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I would make a motion to approve the approval to comply with all DEEP requirements, all town engineer requirements, and all ARB requirements.
Is there a second? Ms. Manos? Okay, motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Ms. Manos, to approve with the stipulations stated, to include the, I didn't quite get all of those, all the DEP recommendations and.
Town engineer.
Town engineer and ARB.
ARB, okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, based on, on the review of the previous boards and the recommendations made by the other departments, I, I think this would be a good application to approve.
I concur, seems like it's also, okay, the Planning and Zoning Office has recommended the approval of the site plan review, and it will remediate contamination of Stratford and mitigate impacts to coastal resources. That's all good stuff. Further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Any zoning enforcement issues, complaints, problems? No? Any accessory apartment applications or sediment and erosion?
No.
And now, this one, I know it's going to take a little time to go through, future text amendments, that was a, quite an interesting document, and for those that, I'm actually very pleased that Mr. Bansky has grabbed this, because we had talked that the state legislature was very active in P and Z matters this session, some things made it through, some things didn't, some things that I didn't even realize made it through, probably buried in the text of some bill, but there's a, was it thirteen-page summary of various items there that either we or our successors are going to have to deal with, some of them are time-sensitive, so we wanted to talk a little bit about that, and that might guide what our agenda looks like for the remainder of the year. So Mr. Bansky, I'll give you the floor to take that. One thing you'll be happy to know is that, it looks like for those of us that are coming off, I don't think we have to take care of commissioner training, so it looks like that's not going to start till January, so we dodged that bullet.
What's everyone doing next week? No.
Go ahead, sir.
So, yeah, I have got five items listed that are going to directly impact the town of Stratford here, the first item being, well, I'll just explain, you know, why I have these on the agenda. First, they're all going to impact the town of Stratford zoning regulations, and two, I need some direction on some of these as to how you as zoning commissioners want staff to proceed with either preparing applications to opt out of some of these items, or to, to have no action, and to allow the state statutes, the state laws that have been approved, allow them to basically override any unchanged regulation here in town. So that's the gist of it. So, you know, one of the first major items that we have here is the introduction of accessory dwelling units. You know, this was a big talk, this was a large conversation at the state regarding, you know, how we could introduce more organic, affordable housing in single-family neighborhoods, and.
Except it says they were not required to be affordable.
They are not required, but that's why I said organically or affordable, they just happen to be more affordable than an apartment building.
Maybe.
It's not a deed, it's not deed restriction, it's not deed restricted, nor can it be. You know, I would say that just given your, given your town or municipality that you live in, some might be affordable in one town and not affordable in another. I would say just based on the, well, I'll just leave it at that. Either way, I'm not here to debate what the legislature has done, I'm just here to try to let you all know what, what direction you can give staff, and do as you feel best for the town. So, we have the option to either opt out of the provision by January first, twenty, twenty-two-three, so that has a pretty quick time limit on it, we would, twenty-two-three, however, the law becomes active in October. So, we could do nothing for two years.
Like October next month, two months?
Mm-hmm, yep. So, we would need a two-thirds vote from the zoning commission to opt out of this regulation, and rely on our accessory residential apartments, which allows people to apply for an accessory dwelling unit within their home. However, it's quite different than what our regulation, than what the state is allowing. You know, the state basically says they don't have to be a relative, let's see, it's not restricted to homeowners or relatives, it's not conditional, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to correct any non-conformities on a lot, currently our regulation says, if your lot doesn't conform, or the structure doesn't conform, you can't have an accessory apartment. Things about exterior doors, things we, conflict our local regulation, as well as square footage size, ours has to be between four and eight hundred square feet, this one says that they must be at least a thousand square feet, and those other requirements, which, some other requirements which do not apply. So, I mean, I guess the commission, we're asking the commission to give staff guidance as to whether or not they feel that, they think the town of Stratford should opt out of complying with these accessory dwelling units, or, and rely on our existing regulation, or allow what the state legislature has passed, as these are what, these are the current types of accessory dwelling units that the town would like to see.
Let me make sure I understand our choices are. So if, our choices are, A, do nothing, and the legislature's law will override us.
Correct.
Option B would be for us to clean up our regulations so that it conforms with the state law? Option three is, what, opt out, and that gives us time? Or how does option three work?
Opt, to opt out, essentially, and say that these types of accessory dwelling units, where it doesn't need to be a family or relative, doesn't need to have its own separate side door, do not apply, and we are going to say that our regulation is what we want to use.
Why do we have the ability to do that?
Because that's what the slate, I, I don't.
So we could hold, so if we, so, okay, I didn't even realize that was an option. So, we could actually say, no, we're going to hold on to our regulation, we're still good? Hmm, that's interesting.
And opt out. I mean, one of my biggest problems with this is, is they're not mandated to be affordable, so it, it takes away that, again, another affordable housing regulation that takes away the ability to achieve affordable housing stature. You're allowed, they're no longer required to be attached, so, and it doesn't say, it says you can't restrict the lot coverage, but somebody with a one-acre house can put up one-acre lot, and probably put up two or three accessory apartments in the back corner, so long as they're within the setbacks and, and lot coverage. So, it turns our, has a potential to turn our, some of our, some of our neighborhoods into apartment complexes, there's no additional requirement for parking, I think it says, no additional parking spaces are required. So it just, it kind of just says, hey, you know, and I know, you know, some towns do it, but I don't think Stratford's that kind of town that, you know, we, go ahead, wherever you want, put up a, put up a structure, turn your, and I get a lot of complaints from people in the north end, you know, about things that go on, you know, they bought up in, they bought in a more, I won't say rural, but more secluded area, and some of the folks up there are, you know, overdeveloping, using it for commercial use, whatever it might be, so, but it takes that away from, from those neighborhoods, and, you know, it, there's no way to regulate it, you know, so. And then there's the whole, the issue with the septic systems, and, and, you know, are we, are we overloading our septic systems now, or, or septics or sewers, or, I would be in favor of opting out of this, it's just, to me, it seems insane.
I just wanted to add that, you know, that's my interpretation of how these, this legislation is to be enacted, and I would like to, you know, if the town attorney has any additional input, to please, feel free to chime in.
The only thing I'll say is that I believe in order to opt out, it's a two-thirds vote of the commission, and then it's also a two-thirds vote of your legislative, you know.
The council.
Yeah, so, I'm just.
And many of these options that we're going to be discussing tonight, that, that is the procedure.
And does that have to be done by October first?
Yes.
That doesn't give us, that doesn't give us any time.
So option two is to revise what we have, correct?
Right.
So, we would have to revise what we have to satisfy all of those commissioners by October first? Or do we have an extended amount of time to revise what we have?
You either do no, do nothing, and by twenty-two-three, or no, by October, these state law basically says, these types of accessory dwelling units are allowed, you opt out, or you wait, feel it out for a few years, and you have until January first, twenty-two-three, to say, you know what, we dipped our toes in it, it didn't work, and we are now opting out.
Okay, you just confused me even more.
I don't need to dip my toes into a stagnant pool to know it's not the place to put my feet.
Yeah, I mean, ordinarily, I think we would, it would have been great to have some sort of a written resolution, say that we hereby opt out to transfer to the town council, but considering that the town council only meets once between now and October first, should we do a voice vote here and refer it over to the council?
No, you can't, it needs to be advert, it needs to be advertised and noticed.
Needs to have a public hearing, I think.
Yep, you need to have a public hearing. So it'll be on our next agenda.
So it'll be, so, okay, so we would have to put it on our agenda, have the hearing on September the twenty-second, and I should notify that the town council, that they should expect to go into special session within a matter, or do they have to advert, no, they probably don't, they would have to act on it within eight days. probably don't, they would have to, uh, act on it within eight days. Wow.
So, it, it says the governing body must also vote to opt out, but it doesn't say that they need to require a public hearing, only says that, uh, the zoning commission or joint planning, zoning commission must hold a public hearing, approve to opt out with a two-thirds majority, and publish the notice of decision. And is there an appeal period to that, or is that just once it's voted, it's done?
I think it's just a resolution.
And then, and then it says the governing body must also vote to opt out with a two-thirds majority, but no, doesn't say anything about a public forum for them.
I mean, I, I don't know if there's, I don't think someone can appeal that. Maybe I'm wrong.
Okay, um, I'll tell you what, um, well, further discussion on that, I think a motion to direct, we need a motion to direct you to prepare, uh, a document sufficiently and put it on our agenda for next month, I'll be happy to make that if there's no other discussion. Be good?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion, I'll make a motion, motion by me, Mr. Solavi, and the second by Mr. Henrick, to direct the planning zoning administrator to draw up and advertise a, uh, opt-out resolution, um, to be put on our calendar and then referred to the town council. Second by Mr. Henrick, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously. Item two, multifamily housing caps.
Okay, this is going to be a big one, we've been talking about this probably for the past, well, at least since I've been here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, numerical caps on multifamily housing, a large section of this, section five, it's actually section five point three, we basically have put caps on multifamily housing, uh, throughout town, and, uh, put a cap on the, the total number of bedrooms that are allowed, uh, in order to develop multifamily housing, and, um, essentially this cap will, will no longer be allowed. Um, so, you know, I propose, I mean, this is a huge change. Uh, I proposed several alternatives maybe three, four years ago, because I, I started to realize that because there was no option for someone to build a multifamily house in Stratford unless it was affordable, because all of our, the cap had been reached. Um, and so, uh, none of those made it to a formal application. Um, so, um, you know, I'd be happy to, to re-present those to the zoning commission for consideration. Uh, I think that there's, I'd have to go back and, and reread fully, but there's one quite simple option, which basically allows for multifamily housing to be allowed in certain single fam, certain zones, not only RM1, um, but also possibly an RS4, or proximity to the train station, there are certain ways that we can control it, so. Um, that is going to be something that we're going to need to be discussing, or at least referring to, uh, I'll take your direction, but we could discuss it here, or refer it to the planning commission for them to discuss and come back with recommendations to the zoning commission.
And, I just a quick question, though, it, it says that it, uh, and to allow a housing that meets the needs outlined in the state, the state plan of conservation and development consolidating plan for housing and community development, is that-
Which section are you?
Uh, multifamily housing, about the fourth paragraph down, under stronger, stronger obligation to zone, enable housing opportunities?
Okay.
Are you aware of what that is, the state plan of conservation and development?
Yes.
Is, is, is that something we use as a guideline?
Uh, it guides state initiatives such as, uh, you know, I think that's most likely where some of eight dash thirty G was born from, is the state plan of conservation and development that said, we are now going to be prioritizing the need of affordable housing over character of your neighborhood. But yeah, so, a lot of, a lot of large tran, transportation projects, they get written into the state plan of conservation and development, helps with funding for certain projects, um, but yes, you know, certain plant, plans that we do need to be consistent with local plan of conservation and development, regional plan of conservation and development, and state.
So, what, if any, uh, so, I'm not sure I see where we have any options, so, all the numericals go away, just by, they're just basically now inconsistent with state law on October first, I'm assuming?
I don't remember the exact date with this one, but I, I, I think it's, um, where is it? Establishes initial deadline of June one, that's the housing plan, which we've already done that.
Thank God.
Uh, I don't have the date, I'm going to have to double check the date. I, I think that one might be effective October first as well.
Okay.
But I, I will check.
So, then, what, um, obviously then we need to rewrite that reg to conform, obviously, but it would remove any numerical or percentage caps in there, I'm not sure what else we can latch on to, I'd have to look at the reg itself. Um, planning should probably be involved in this too, um, because this is going to be the development of, I mean, it, it basically, our reg will just fall into non-compliance, assuming, and be unenforceable until we replace it with something, so that's actually, we do have some exposure on that, to have a, a nonexistent regulation for, until such time as we adopt one. Um, so, we're going to have to draft something relatively quickly.
And I do have some alternat, some, some potential options that I, I haven't looked at much in the past few years, since, uh, they were proposed, but I can certainly bring the, uh, send those out to the commission for review.
Okay.
Uh, and look, we may dig in to the details even deeper on these things and find, well, maybe there's, maybe we don't necessarily have to do this. I, I've been a proponent of fixing this for quite a long time, so, um, but, you know, I wasn't elected by the residents of Stratford, so.
Can you research and then get back to us even at our special, well, our, our mid-month meeting, um, on where you are? I don't think we're ready to have a, a document ready, but, right now, but let's at least keep the discussion going.
Uh, we, unfortunately, because it's a special meeting, cannot discuss any, any items that aren't on the agenda.
Okay, so then let's, let's be prepared to discuss at the regular.
Okay.
Yep.
Did I hear that you wanted this referred to the planning commi, did it-
Loop them in, we can use their- I want, uh, the, the, this is one of those things, at least in my mind, that the broader input, I think is better. Uh, I don't know whether I necessarily want to run up the hill by myself on this one. Um, we could do that if you like. Can I have a motion to, um, let's see, how do we want to say, I'll make a motion that we direct the planning and zoning administrator, um, in consultation with the town planner, town planning commission, uh, to draw up a proposal and-
And recommendations.
And recommendations to be submitted by the end of the month.
I'll second that.
Okay.
End of August?
Yeah, that's a good point, end of Sept, I'm already thinking of September. Uh, and not necessarily the final document, but at least get us something that we can start working with. Um, you know, I don't think we need a, I don't think we're going to be able to do a reg that quickly, but at least give us some options that, so that we can debate them at our next meeting. Okay? Can we have a second?
I second it.
So, I'll second, Mr. Henrick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously, we'll obviously be in touch on this one.
Okay. Next item, outdoor dining.
Ah, we got to vote no to this one.
Yeah.
Uh, there are going to be some restrictions here, um, for outdoor dining, um, or, or lifting of certain restrictions, um, let's see, uh, extends the, this extends the outdoor dining, uh, to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, uh, including the ten-day turnaround of, of applications, uh, documentation for applications, um, conditions for public sidewalks, all the, all the stuff that we're essentially doing are, are ready, and everyone's already able to take advantage of. Um, the, the thing that's going to be affecting the town of Stratford is, uh, that food establishments, uh, are allowed to provide dining as of right, uh, outdoor dining as of right in any, uh, food establishment unless it's a non-conforming use, so, uh, a restaurant in the middle of a single-family neighborhood and the use is not conforming, outdoor dining is not permitted as of right. Currently, under section seven point seven point two, outdoor dining requires approval from the zoning commission, so that is going to need to go, go away, essentially.
Really? Okay, um, okay, so, because we've been doing this more as an administrative approval, haven't we?
I have never, I haven't had, I think everyone must have already got their administrative approvals, because I've never had someone come in for an outdoor dining permit. I've had people come in for, um, an extension of a liquor permit to an existing outdoor dining, uh, area.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so then our appropriate action would be the repeal of our outdoor dining regulation?
Just the fact, well, a, a, a good portion of it.
Yeah.
Um-
But is this, is this one, it, it says March thirty-one, twenty twenty-one through March thirty-one, twenty-two, is, is that mean that that is the life cycle of this legislation?
Uh, no, that's the life cycle, and I'll let, uh, Attorney Sullivan chime in if she'd like, um, that's the life cycle of the executive, extension of the executive order, and then beginning April first, twenty twenty-two, um, the below item, the, the below items such as outdoor dining being permitted as of right will take effect.
Attorney Sullivan?
This is presuming that the executive order, when it expires on May, on March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, then that's when the April first, twenty twenty-two, so it's basically saying, up until then, you're under seven MM, after that, there's outdoor dining as of right, so I think in part it's to give yourself a little time to figure out, you know, what-
I mean, I could tell you, having been on this commission more, you know, years, when we first started it, everybody who wanted it had to come in for a yearly approval, uh, and it was, I think it was April to October or something like that, and what happened is eventually we had a very warm October and November one year, and people went further, they kept coming back, and we would literally be sitting up in the conference room with a stack of approvals, and eventually, we made it more permanent and said any new ones, I think, had to come through, but basically every restaurant did, and, I mean, it has not been a problem, uh, generally, um, and, I mean, considering what we've been through here, um, you know, it's worked out pretty well, so I don't necessarily have a problem with repealing that regulation just to keep our books clean, um-
So, just out of curiosity, based on this legislation, little pub can continue to do outdoor dining across the street because this allows them to do that, and it doesn't matter whether we approved what they wanted or not.
They already have an approval for, on, wait, on this, wait, across, when you said across the street, meaning their original property or meaning at the-
Well, they're out, they're, they're, they're outdoor dining that's been, that's been-
Yeah.
Uh, established by seven MM now extends through this legislation.
Well, temporarily.
Well, there's, there's no, there's no, there's no daylight to this legislation, it's just beginning April one, twenty twenty-two.
Well, that's outside dining, uh, my, I mean, I'd have to dig into the details, but my guess is that does, would not extend outdoor dining to, uh, outdoor dining across the street necessarily, maybe, maybe it would, I mean, the way we read the, the executive order is that it allowed folks to do it in other, other places that weren't on property.
Um, well, it says a, a food establishment must seek an administrative site plan review to determine whether both outdoor dining use and foreign zoning would apply. That, that's as of April first.
What page are you on, Mr. Vigliati?
Page five.
Oh, okay.
That's right, um-
Okay.
Beginning April one, that, I mean, at least that's, right?
Okay, I got it, thank you.
And we'll have to determine whether or not that's a staff-reviewed administrative review, or, I mean, it doesn't say here, or that's commission, I mean, and maybe the commission, when it seeks to revise our outdoor dining regulations, says it's an administrative site plan review by staff to ensure that there's no public safety issues, blah, blah, whatever happens.
Yeah, this is interesting, the way it says this here, administrative site plan review to determine whether the proposed outdoor dining use conforms with zoning requirements not contemplated by the bill, for example, regulations unrelated to providing pedestrian pathways and parking. Huh. That's interesting.
I hear that, and I hear that's a staff review to make sure that, because that's what, essentially what the executive order tasks, the departments reviewing these outdoor, temporary outdoor dining is, make sure that the people aren't getting run over by cars in parking lots.
Mm-hmm.
And that's essentially what we did, or at least tried our best.
Okay, um, so, I think that's a reg that needs a, maybe not a repeal, but a can, can cleanup slash conformance check?
And I would recommend maybe a referral to the planning commission for further study on this.
I, I think that's a good idea. Uh, can we have a motion to direct the planning and zoning administrator, um, to draw up a, uh, revision to our outdoor dining regulation and submit it to the planning commission for consideration and referral back? Mr. Vigliati, second, Mr. Francis, any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, carries unanimously recreational cannabis.
Yeah, you thought that earlier the evening was tough.
Ooh.
Okay, so, I, I'll be honest, I mean, there's so many things going on, this one's even, this one's off my radar, I mean, I don't a hundred percent know what the, going to be the next path is, what's-
It's a little foggy, is what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly, I know. What, what municipalities that I have talked to are doing is enacting a twenty-four month, uh, moratorium on any dispensing of, uh, recreational marijuana. Um, I mean, I have, I was, uh, I was speaking with Mary Young, who's my counterpart in, uh, Westport, and their, their provision that they, their prohibition that was, is up for adoption, I believe, either this week or next week, is, uh, for a period of twenty-four months, commencing from effective date X, um, all cannabis establishments with the exception of dispensary, with the expense, except, exception of dispensary facilities are prohibited in all zones, districts of the town of Westport, so, um, and their dispensary facilities are their medical dispensary facilities. So-
It also says that the, the, the electors can petition on a referendum as to whether they allow the sale.
Yeah, and I haven't even gotten to the, the rest of this.
What's, what's required, remember, to, to opt out, um, he also, this also requires, uh, the legal vote by the county council, it can go to a referendum, um, but if a municipality takes sign, then a dispensary, a cannabis establishment is basically, uh, considered to be regulated as any similar use, be like a liquor store.
Liquor store.
I think most towns are treat, if, if they are looking to prove it, they would, they would treat it like a liquor store, because it's a regulated substance. The guidance really hasn't come out from the state yet, it's, you know, somewhat complicated, a lot of towns are taking, you know, the option and just putting, you know, a moratorium in place. Um, there is, you know, there will be additional licenses out, there's also an opportunity under this, under the statute to relocate existing medical marijuana facilities, to make them hybrid facilities, so, um, uh, you know, there, I think they'll be jockeying. Um, and these facilities, the, the retail, uh, facilities are limited to one for every twenty-five thousand people, you know, one, if you have less than that, you still get one, but, um, so, you know, it's going to be interesting how licenses will come out, and then towns will either opt in or, or opt out, but Jay's right, the majority of towns have said, um, you know, we'll put a moratorium in for, uh, a certain period of time on the- But Jay's right, the majority of towns have said, you know, we'll put a moratorium in for a certain period of time on the recreational.
So Stratford, by obligation, would be allowed to?
And, and there is also a tax incentive, I mean, some of the tax money is going to come back, I think it's a three percent, is going to come back to those, those towns that, that do have recreational. And there's also opportunities for what they're calling sort of an equity piece, so people who have been disadvantaged can partner with, you know, existing companies to, to, you know, for that benefit. So it's up to you to make the determination, but, as I said, there's no guidance really from the state yet, which a lot of people are waiting for also, so.
And so if you turn to page seven on the handout, the very top, you know, gives what I see as the most succinct guidance, which is municipal zoning regulations may establish rules regulating the following regarding cannabis establishments. You can prohibit them from opening, you can restrict them in their hours and signage, and you can restrict their proximity, which I, I don't understand two and three, because I feel like there's case law that says you can't restrict content to signage, and that you, and that distance rules are not legal, so I'm not sure how those.
And we found that it, not even illegal, they're unworkable, because we had the, the whole, the experience that we've had with our former regulation for distances of liquor stores to schools was just an absolute mess, I'm being polite.
And I believe you can take those proximities into consideration, but they cannot be the determinant factor of, of why one would get approved and not. But either way, I think one option is one, I mean, you can either prohibit them through a moratorium and study it until you figure out what things end up looking like two years from now, when actually, potentially, the first store could open up.
So they're not allowed to open up yet for another two years?
That's my understanding of it, yes.
Thoughts?
See how it plays out. But if you want to see how they work, drive up to Massachusetts, and they have dispensaries up there, and, and see what they look like. According to Mark Bowden, our, our former gubernatorial candidate, and now our state tax commissioner, I think is, he was on the radio, but he was just talking about the, the phenomenal amount of taxes that could be brought into a community with these. He's been up to Massachusetts, supposedly traveled around the country, places who have them, and has done a study on them. He's promoting it as a way for municipalities to significantly grow their, their tax base, but, I mean, all depends on his people's view of it. But they do have them in Massachusetts, they're not far away, if you wanted to see what they look like.
They're worth a try.
They're medical.
That's all medical?
Recreational.
I mean, I've also heard a lot of good things about the taxes of the, the towns and cities that have these dispensaries are substantial. But I would need a template or something just to kind of see how they're working and in their, in their guidelines and their procedures before I.
So if they can't even start, then, I mean, there, I guess there's no harm in doing nothing, right? Or do you think that a moratorium until such time as we can develop an actual regulation, do we have any exposure by not acting? Let me just ask from a legal perspective.
Well, I think what's going to happen is those, those towns that are accepting, I mean, you know, the companies will already be sort of jockeying for position. And since the medical, the way it's going to work is that the medical marijuana facilities are going to be able to move within a ten-mile radius of where they are now, so, and, and be a hybrid facility, so have recreational and medical in the same, the same location, and those licenses already exist. So there'll be, you know, as I said, there's no guidance yet, but what's going to happen is there'll be people who want to get into this business, and, but they don't have a license. Half of those licenses are going to go to, to equity, you know, to, to disadvantaged. That's part of the whole, part of the whole process. So there's not going to be one in every town, because there's just not, that's just, the market wouldn't allow that, and the licenses are, there's just not going to be enough licenses for that. So I do think that at some point, some towns are going to step up and say, we're interested in this, and we're interested in the tax money, and they will have either relocated medical facilities, or, you know, once the new licenses come out. But right now, it's sort of in a state of flux, because there's no, there's no guidance from the state, and you know, as Jay said, many towns are saying, you know, let's, let's wait and see how it, you know, how it, how it plays out. But it's up, it's totally up to, you know, I, I do think that going forward, it's, it's going to be a retail business. I mean, I'm not saying there aren't going to be issues, but.
Yeah. Okay, so what's your pleasure, do we, I'm not sure what the best approach is on this one.
Send them off to planning.
You know, actually, it's probably not a bad idea to start the process of drafting some regulation. I don't know that we're going to have them done quickly, but, you know, put it on their agenda and let them work, work on it. Isn't it great sending things down to the other chamber? You gotta love that.
Differ.
Yep. Yeah, they've had a few very quick meetings lately, I was talking to one of the members, so. Okay, parking for housing units.
All right, this one is relatively straightforward.
Hallelujah.
Okay, so new legislation that's going to impact Stratford, and this is on page eight, and it's the one, two, three, it's the fourth item down, reduced parking requirements. Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine requires that zoning must not require parking in excess of one space per studio, or one-bedroom unit, or two spaces for larger units unless municipality opts out of this requirement through a two-step process requiring action by both the Planning and Zoning Commission, it would be us, the zoning commission, and the Town Council, same process for the accessory dwelling units. So how this impacts us, in section twelve, point five, point two, we require two space, let's see, for residents apartments, two spaces for each dwelling unit containing two bedrooms or more, one and a half spaces for each unit containing an efficiency, so that section would need to be changed from one and a half spaces to one, and then plus a ten percent addition for guest parking. I'm unsure of how exactly this reduced parking requirement, if a commission can ask for ten percent more on top of the bare minimum of, you have twenty sing, twenty efficiency units, all you need to do is provide twenty parking spaces. Can, or can a zoning commission say, okay, you're, we want twenty parking spaces for the twenty efficiencies and ten percent for visitor parking? I don't know, I just don't know, I don't know the answer.
Well, it says, requires that zoning must not require parking in excess of one space.
Well, and, and I'm, I'm le, I'm led to believe that that's how it's going, that's how it's going to work, but until I really, we really dig in to see what exactly is allowed and get opinions from our, the town attorney's office, and my guess is it's just going to be a bare minimum, can't require more than one for an efficiency.
And, and is this, is this legislation in effect now, or is there a start date on it?
I believe that this is October as well, because the ones that don't have the October date on it, the ones that don't have the due dates are the ones that are basically, you need to have done by October, accessory dwelling units.
Based, based on the fact that anytime we have an apartment or complex, the biggest complaint we get is the parking, I'd almost be afraid to put this on the same date as the other one, because the public forum might be overwhelming.
Correct.
I mean, I think we should opt out of it anyway, but the, the process is there.
Do we have the ability to opt out of this one?
We do.
We do.
Same process as, as the other one.
So if, if we.
No, just, just zoning, zoning needs to have a public hearing, and then we vote, and then we send it to council, and they, both need to be two-third majority votes.
But if we opt out, that means we get to hold on to our reg as is?
Correct.
You think that's going to cause a lot of controversy?
Well, I'm just saying that, that typically, we have a ton of people come out and, not the fact that we want to opt out of it, but if we have a public forum, people are going to come and speak in favor of opting, I think, because we have so much opposition to the parking. I mean, and ours is more restrictive than this, and they complain ours isn't enough, so saying we're going to be lowering the parking, we're mandated to lower the parking regulations requirements, what do you think, yes or no? I think we'll get overwhelmed by people coming out to say, opt out.
But then if we don't act by October first, do we lose our ability to opt out?
No, we have till the twenty-third of whenever.
We have till when?
Two years. Basically, two years, same as the other one.
My guess is that it's two years, but I have to confirm.
All right, let's do that, confirm the, the time on this one. And obviously, we'll keep in touch, if it turns out that we're going to, that's our one and only shot to do it, we might just have to bite the bullet on that one.
And we, on any of these items, if we find some, something that we realize the clock is truly ticking, we can always schedule a remote special meeting to handle any of these opt-out items, if we needed to. Because the agendas coming up over the next few months are, I won't say scary, but they're, they're going to be busy, very busy with, with development applications.
Great.
And then they, they've also started this wonderful zero, Vision Zero Council, eliminate all transportation-related fatalities and severe injuries. A commission to do that, I mean, nobody likes fatalities or injuries, but it's, it's an impossibility to eliminate all. The best way to do that is make everybody walk.
Don't give them any ideas.
But then, but then they trip on a sidewalk, and they have a, they have a, they have a severe injury, so walking's out too.
Yeah, we, we both sat on financing claims, so.
Crazy, this stuff, these people.
Should I proceed with, if this has an October opt-out deadline, same as the accessory dwelling unit, to prepare an opt-out, to begin preparing something for an agenda to opt out?
Yes.
Yeah. If you want to motion that effect, I'll make.
I'd make a motion to direct the zoning director to prepare, begin the process.
Yeah, draft a opt-out resolution, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. Land use approval extension, expirations eighteen month.
Save the easiest one for last.
Well, you wrote the agenda, I didn't.
Well, this one is going to have a lot of implications throughout the entire state of Connecticut, I'm, I'm really, this is the one I'm going to need to sit down and, and really consult with the town attorney's office about what we need to do regarding the expiration of land use approvals like a special, special case. You know, this, this bill essentially says that approvals are valid for nineteen years.
Nineteen years?
Yep, and we have, we, our regulations essentially say, you've got eighteen months to pull a building permit or nice notion yet.
Wow.
So there's quite a gap between what we typically expect and what this regulation, what this legislation is saying. Not only with special cases, but with subdivisions as well. So I, I guess I'm more intimidated by the amount of approvals that are still in effect.
Is it retroactive?
After, after I have said that they are, they have expired, so I'm unsure of how retroactively that's going to work. But, and we're going to have to deal with those items as they come. I, I, I hope that this is more a, we essentially strike the expiration section from the regulations, but maybe the town attorney has, has another thought on exactly how we should be approaching this.
I, I, I agree with Jay, I mean, I think we have to sit down and go through it, because there's, it's complicated, and it's like, if it's expired as of this date, or if it's expired as of that date, so I think we have to, we have to figure that out. I'm not really sure why, I mean, that's a long period of time, and I'm not really sure why it's.
Why nineteen, you know, not twenty, nineteen?
Absolutely, you know, so, but Jay and I can certainly go through it and figure out how to implement it or what to do.
And we may have to just deal with what comes our way, as if someone says, hey, I've got this project I want a, I want a building permit for, we'll just have to
Yeah.
discuss that, but maybe.
So I would say, take as much time as you need to do this one. I don't want, you know, as much as we're saying we're trying to, to, you know, move quickly to, you know, protect ourselves, let's not move too quickly, God forbid. You know, so some of these, I mean, if some of these are, I don't know if any ever went to court and challenged them, and then we've changed our regs, we had to go change them back, you might want to think about some creative approaches on this particular one.
For the future text amendment, do you need that? Because, can I have that one?
Chris?
Yeah.
Uh, this is my note, I can give you, get you copies though.
Okay.
This is, Gail, this is the page you're going to want, meeting procedures. All kinds of new work for you. You might retire, you might retire once you read that one.
We may even have an extra copy floating around here, too.
I'll get, I'll get you. You know what, I'll forward one to you right now, just so that you have it.
So, so I think maybe the best course of action, as opposed to referring this to the Planning Commission for study, or maybe might be to allow Attorney Sullivan and I to kind of sit down and wrap our brains around this one. I mean, we've got two years' worth of work on these other things to do by next month.
So we want like a motion to have the town attorney and planning zoning director go over some of the?
I don't think you need to motion it, but yeah.
You want to make, let's just do it to be formal, so we know we affirmatively acted, so I'll take that as a motion for Mr. Francis. Second, Ms. Manos, any further discussion, aside from, like I said, take your time and think strategically about this one. And, you know, even if we have to put in something like some escape clause and say, in conformance with state regulations, God forbid they change it. I don't expect to see much of a change in legislature, but you never know. You know, just do, just be, think strategically, and we can talk about it, obviously. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. If you were a kid, those were pretty heavy.
And, and I'm just, I'll just add, there's a bunch more items here that affect us, but not with immediate changes. The trainings, as Chairman Solhavy mentioned, I, I, I'm a full supporter of this, I think.
I actually am too.
I think it's a great idea to be, look, I, I am required my license to go to trainings and constantly learn about how land use law is evolving and changes, and nothing, this is a perfect example, that nothing stays the same.
Yeah, it does.
And as soon as you think it does, it has a monumental change, so, you know, there are things like that, and zoning enforcement officers are required to maintain a certification from the zoning enforcementers, zoning enforcement officers organization, which Dan will be, he's already ahead of this, he's been, he's getting ready to do that this fall, so, and I think we're pretty much on top of most of all these other items on here, I, I think.
Excellent.
There is, there's the other one in here, that's just, where did I see it? Zo, zoning cannot be used, where was I, zoning cannot be used to stop overcrowding?
Yep.
Oh, additional regulations, yeah.
To do what?
Enables statutes eight, two, and two to remove language allowing zoning to be used to prevent the overcrowding of land and, and avoid undue concentration of population. So basically, we can't say, we can't set, it's almost, it kind of sounds like our lot-sized prohibitions are out the window, and, you know, if you've got an acre land, you can put six houses on it because, you know, that's what I kind of read it as.
As a builder, do you like that or not?
No, actually, actually, I don't. I don't, I really don't. I mean, I think, you know, I think part of, part of towns' charm, every town is different, every city's different, but part of a charm, part of a, a city's charm is, is the large populations and the, you know, the nightlife and all the proximity to everything, and part of a town's charm is, is its space to move around, and, you know, to have a backyard and have a play space for your kids, and not to, not to have, you know, eight, 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 ADUs, whatever they call them, it will use, ADUs on a one-acre property when your house is in the front. It just, it goes against, you know, character, and they say you can't use character anymore, but goes against character of a neighborhood or character of a home, or, you know, you can have a mishmash of stuff all over the place, and I just, doesn't seem appropriate.
And I know it can be discouraging to read things like this sometimes, but there are a lot of things that are in here that have changed, that I think were changed for the better, that we're already doing. All, every municipality has to do a housing plan, and it's due in a year. Ours is done. We're the first, we're the first municipality in the state of Connecticut to do it, and the state is using our, our planning program as a template for the other towns.
Nice.
So that's good.
Congratulations to you guys.
Yep.
Well done.
Thank you. As well as many other items that we're doing, that we're doing on here, and we just need little tweaks, so, you know, I think there's, it's not all bad news.
All right. Model community, we are.
Huh?
Board of Ed.
That's my goal.
Yep. Okay, two, anything else from the state? Okay. Two items for other. First of all, I am in receipt of a court decision, and I just asked Attorney Sullivan to just give us a quick status report as to where we stand on that.
So we have a new decision from Judge Shaw on our 500, 500 North. It is, it's 40 pages and it's, and it's complicated, but the bottom line is that she was of the opinion that the, there should have been an approval that was heavily conditioned, including that the town engineer and the fire marshal would have to sign off on that, that very tall retaining wall. So we will be filing a petition for cert. I expect the applicant will also be filing a petition for cert, but that's, that's where we stand right now, so. Stay tuned. She also included a remand to the commission, so, you know, we won't be doing anything until we hear whether the appellate court will hear us, but that's where it stands.
And that's for 795 James Farm Road, for anyone who doesn't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
When she mentioned, when she mentioned the very tall retaining wall, I...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you knew which one we were talking about, yeah.
And this is application two. The first one was denied, appealed, and then sustained, so.
I'm surprised she wasn't, I guess she wasn't wowed by my very forceful handwritten unanimous agreement collective decision that we, we came to, you know? I guess not.
And is it, is it the same judge that required us to meet again and...
It did, it is. It's the same case, so, you know, as the chairman just said, she didn't really say that our, the collective decision part was bad, she just sort of went off and then said, oh, and how about the balancing test? And if you get to the balancing test, then, you know, you need to balance the need for affordable housing against the project. And then she thought, well, maybe this project could be conditioned, addressing the same issues that this commission raised, which is, that's a pretty big retaining wall that doesn't look, that looks like it's a public health and safety issue, as well as the fire trucks. I mean, if you remember, there's, there was a big issue about the fire trucks.
Process, everything about it.
So you're all welcome to read the decision, but it's, it is 40 pages, so.
Commissioner Fredette.
Microphone.
Your mic, Rich?
Rich, microphone.
What was your question? Microphone?
So this is not a victory for either side?
So I think that's, that's a good way to wrap it up, which is that we, the expectation is that neither side is particularly happy with the, with the decision, so.
Okay. Okay, the other item that I wanted to bring to members' attention, and I know we've sort of flaunted it tonight, it's really hard to do a meeting wearing a mask. I give you Attorney Sullivan, Mr. Bansky, a lot of credit. I, with all the talking I have to do today, it just wasn't feasible. My apologies. As you're aware, the COVID situation continues to change. The, we, the applicant for the September 8th meeting has requested a remote hearing, which, after some consideration and discussion of the logistics I granted, and that's why we're doing it that way, because running a hybrid meeting of some remote, some not remote, is just impractical at this point. I, we're now at code red, I, we obviously can't, you know, but we have more meetings coming up. I'm perfectly comfortable staying in town hall. I know some commissions are thinking about going back to remote, but I will take guidance from my members as to how they want to proceed, either in person or remote, and we can obviously, you know, how, where we are at the end of September, where we are at the end of October, you know, might have a difference. I'm vaccinated and I, I guess I got only a few months ago, so I'm still good, but, you know, obviously, I don't want to put any members in a bad position, so I just want some guidance from you guys. Do you want to stay in town hall, or do you want to go back to remote? Mr. Henrich?
Have we had any issues with any of our previous approvals that were done during remote and public access and, and anything along those lines? I mean, have we been able to fully meet the regulatory? I just waiting for you to finish. The regulatory requirements laid out by the, by our, I don't know, by our requirements.
Well, I mean, I can answer that, but also let Attorney Sullivan answer as well. I mean, we've had one appeal over the past year. That appeal has been undecided. I feel like we have, this is under the remote meetings, we've had one appeal, and that's been undecided as to whether or not procedures or the executive orders were legal. I feel, and still feel, that we have always met all notice requirements, all public hearing requirements, and all requirements for public commentary, so otherwise, I wouldn't have done it, and, you know.
So, so then, I mean, and I didn't, I just want to make sure that if we did go remote, my preference would be here in person. You know, again, I've been vaccinated, I had it supposedly, I don't think I did, but they say I did, but I think, I think it, hopefully, it's going to pass, but they say all people vaccinated, you know, the amount of people in the hospital are vaccinated are minimal, and those people have very, not insignificant, but lesser symptoms. So I'd say, if you're asking me, we should continue to meet in person.
Yep. Any thoughts, Mr. Bigliotti?
I wear a mask all day at work anyway.
Okay.
Coming here to wear one, nope, nope.
You're good to stay in town hall? Okay. Ms. Manos? Mr. Francis? Okay, well, then you'll be even better next month. Mr. Fredette, you good to stay? Okay, and staff? Okay, so then we'll continue. Obviously, we're going to, we're going to do the remote meeting on the 8th to accommodate the petitioners, and I mean, the petitioners may ask, I'll take them as a case-by-case basis, but barring any major changes here, we'll stay remote, I mean, so we'll stay in town hall moving forward, and we'll just keep checking in on how things go. That's all we can do, day by day. Mr. Bansky?
And I just have one question of, well, actually, no, I'll, I'll talk with the town attorney after this.
Okay. Any other goal-setting, SAEP recommendations, town council, POCD, TOD, anything else? Okay. So then our next meeting, despite what it says here, is the remote meeting on Wednesday, September 8th, 7:00 p.m., and you'll obviously be getting your materials, and then we'll be back in chambers on September 22nd. Can make a motion to adjourn? Mr. Francis, second. Ms. Manos, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We are adjourned at 9:41 p.m. Thank you, everybody.